Please take the roll.
Trustee Heitman. Trustee Debsy.
Present.
Clerk Vorba here. Trustee Dorchevitz.
Here.
Trustee Kirmi.
Here.
Treasurer Clinton.
Here.
Supervisor Heise.
Here.
All present, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight's Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Chief Dan Phillips. Thank you very much. Item B1 is our protocol and procedures for the June 9th meeting. Tonight, we are a multimedia presentation once again. We are live here at Township Hall. And if you want to stop by and visit us tonight, you can certainly do that. Just bring your mask. We are also on the phone. We have a phone line, which is 877-853-5257. And there's the meeting ID, 841-1732-5960. If you are on the line tonight, if you're on the phone line, if you want to be heard at the end of the meeting, just press *9, and that will allow us to bring you online for questions or comments. If you are on your computer watching or listening to us tonight, just click the Raise Hand icon. And if you are watching on television and on the phone, we would ask that you turn the volume off on your TV as there is a 30-second delay between the television and you listening to us on the phone. In addition to that, we have consultants here tonight from Platt Moran who will be guiding us through the 2019 audit. And they are on more of a video Zoom format as well. So Jerry, how many mediums are we working on tonight? One, two, three, four, five, six, maybe seven, if you count us being here. So don't ever say that we were not fully transparent in getting these meetings out to the public. Okay then. I think we're covered on that. I will need a motion now, item C, to approve the agenda. I just have one change. We are going to pull item E3. This is the Andover Forest Storm Drain Agreement. That still needs some work, and we're going to move that to the June 23rd meeting without any problems with that. So I would just ask that item E3 be pulled from tonight's agenda. Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion.
Kurt, I have a question about the Andover Forest.
Yeah.
You're going to do this to make sure that we are using the new agreement that doesn't force us to be the fronter of money like we did at Lake Point.
It's an agreement that covers us more fully from a liability perspective to prevent that type of thing from happening.
The one that's in there was notarized in May of 2018. So he'll have to, the owner will have to sign it again.
Right. We expect that they will. Okay, so I need a motion on the agenda.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Heitman.
I move we approve the agenda as amended.
Motion's made by Trustee Heitman. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Clerk Vorba. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Very good. Item D is approval of the consent agenda. I have a couple questions. Yes. Looking at the minutes, so that would be page four of the packet, first page of the minutes. I notice Mr. Kirmi needs to have his position added. No, no, it's just here at the present, it says Supervisor Treasurer Clerk, you are apparently missing as a trustee, that's all. Just a typo.
Okay.
And then, I'm sorry, I didn't have time to go back and look. But with regard to the action on the sidewalk replacement program, was that a voice vote or was that a roll call vote?
That was a voice vote.
Okay.
Yeah, it was.
Question on the bills. That would be page 21 of the packet, and this, I guess, is for the clerk. We have three different kinds of postal, well, five different types of postal mailings, all with different prices. And I just would like to have some information on why. One's $3,000, one's $240, so it doesn't have to be now, but...
Yeah. But in short, it has to do with ones for the postage machine, some are for our permits that we have.
Okay. And then under Communications, I believe we received an email, and now I hard copy something from the fire chief. Is that going to be covered?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So before we, let me see here, we have, before we approve the consent agenda, I would like the chief, fire chief, to walk us through this item, assuming that there are no other questions on any other items. Okay. So in front of you tonight was also emailed to you. This was supposed to have been on the last agenda. But this is a report from the Insurance Service Office. This is the National Rating System for Fire Departments. And this is all part of what's otherwise known as the ISO report, and we've talked about this before. So the ISO report comes out, I don't know if it comes out annually or every five years. And so we have, our position has improved since the last report, and I'd like Chief Phillips to expound further on that. And then also, to the best of your ability, kind of talk about what we can do in the future to enhance our rating system even further.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Yeah, the ISO stands for Insurance Services Office. It's a subscription service paid for by insurance companies. Insurance companies hire them to basically test and rate fire departments around the nation. And they do that by looking at several criteria and then testing that criteria. The insurance companies then use that information to determine how to set their rates, how to predict loss, and other things like that. How the ISO uses it is they look at several factors. One factor is needed fire flow. How much water does a community like Plymouth Township need to put out a fire? Does its water supply have the capabilities to supply that amount of water? Does their fire engines have enough capacity to put that on the fire? Is their communication system properly able to dispatch those firefighters to the scene? And once on the scene, can the firefighters, are they properly trained? Do they have the right tools, equipment to put out the fire? The ISO has determined that if a community invests in their fire department, that's a good predictor for lessening future fire loss. They use a Public Protection Classification Scale system. Now, this system, a 1 is the best and a 10 is the worst. With this report, Plymouth Township drops to what's called a 5.5X, which is a, one of the things where they have a community like ours, they separate it to say, yeah, it's 5 in one point and a 5X in another area, to a 4, a solid 4 across the entire community. To my knowledge, that's the best Plymouth Township has ever had in its history. We are less than two points away from dropping to a rating of a 3. A 4 is important because it's good for homeowners. When you drop to a 4, that's a marker for insurance companies to relook at the score. What they choose to do with it is up to them. State Farm has for years and years subscribed to ISO, but they also subscribe to another system as well, and they use both systems to determine their rates. One of the things that helped, or several of the things that helped us go to a rate was this board's decision to reopen Fire Station 2, to invest in the fire department, and to replace equipment that was 30 years old. We had firefighting equipment, namely our fire engines, that weren't able to even make it to the scene. And because this board invested in that equipment, we were able to make these improvements, which puts us in a much better position. Now, some of the other things we can do in the future is continue what we've already started. We can do better training. We can improve our water system, improve our testing of our water system at a higher level. Right now, I believe, Patrick's not here, but we test our hydrants at a three-to-four-year system. We can lower that. If we're testing them more often, that shows that they're more reliable. We can make sure that our firefighting equipment stays up to date and has the capabilities to put out fires in this community. We've built a lot of buildings in the last 20 years in Plymouth since our new trucks. These new trucks today are so much more effective than the trucks we had 20 years ago. We built the hotel on Beck Road, the Bosch Building. I could go on and on with all the building that's gone on here in the last 20 years. So we've made solid improvements. Some of the things we can do in the future is some training for our firefighters. We started a program last year where the firefighters go to every business in the community and conduct a pre-fire survey. They look at how to fight a fire in that building. We get points for that. These are points we never got before. We're about 25% done with that project. Before COVID, I was hoping to get 75% done by the end of this year, but we were sidelined. That is one thing that can help us improve our ISO rating in the future. Another thing that I looked at last year is a training facility for our firefighters. If you look on under Training, I think it's on page 13, nope. I'm sorry, page 17 at the top, you'll see Training Facilities and Use. We have zero points in that category because we do not have a training facility for our firefighters in our community. The only way to get points in that is to have a training facility. That's probably the, that is the only zero you'll find in this report that we're getting. We don't have, we had built a small training facility. They won't count that.
Do you get credit for using Schoolcraft or any of the other regional facilities?
Unfortunately, I asked that question, no, we don't. Because I tried everything. We even built our own, small training, behind Fire Station 3. They wouldn't count that. So I've been looking at different options that we can go in the future. This is a couple-year-ahead project that we can look at to improve ourselves over the coming years. So we have room to improve our rating and get better.
Well, thank you. That's very encouraging, and I think it shows that our investments are paying off. They also look at fire suppression equipment inside buildings like industrial parks, et cetera.
When they do needed fire flow, that is part of their calculation. They'll look at a building like some of our biggest buildings, like Ford Motor Company, the Bosch Building, and determine if that building is on fire, what is necessary for us to deliver. And the equipment in there takes that number down that we're required to provide.
All right. Any questions for the chief on this? Very good. Any other questions on item D, approval of the consent agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Supervisor. Clerk. I move for the approval of consent agenda for Tuesday, June 9th, 2020.
Very good. Motion's made by Clerk Vorba. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Heitman. Hold those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We're moving on now to item E, New Business. Item E1 is the Fiscal Year 2019 Audit Presentation and Approval. Ginger Moriarty, our Finance Director, is here tonight along with two of our prime consultants from Platt Moran. And they will be walking us through the audit. I don't know who wants to go first. The Platt Moran folks are going to go first. Okay, Kerry and Martin, and I think, can you hear us? Okay. So Kerry, I think you're going to take the lead. Oh, yeah, I'll do that. I think Kerry, you're going to take the lead in terms of sharing stuff on the screen, which you're doing right now. That's perfect. Okay, Kerry, then take it away.
Yes, sir. Kerry's going to be the driver. I just wanted to make a quick introduction of us. So my name is Martin Leenig, I'm the Partner on the Audit Engagement. This is your manager. Thank you for having us. I know that...
Okay, Martin. Martin, you're coming in real choppy, so...
Is it any better?
It's better.
Okay. So I will slow down a little bit. So thank you again for having us. We are presenting the 2019 Financial Statement Audit. This is one of the earlier times of presenting, and we wrapped up audit on time without any glitches or anything like that. And I know this is a huge task, not only by the Finance Director and the whole team at the Township, including a Treasurer, Clerk, and everybody that was working on this very diligently, but also we had to worry about virtual testing and doing a lot of things remotely. So thank you so much for being flexible given these unusual circumstances. Kerry is going to cover the graphs tonight, very similar to years past. One comment I did want to make is regarding the financial statements. The financial statements, which are going to be covered in a graphical form, the very first page is the letter, the opinion letter. And once again, as in the past, it is a clean opinion. What that means is that you can rely on the numbers that are presented in the financial statements. They've been subject to our audits based on sample testing, et cetera. And I did want to point out one thing too, that the Township did implement a new standard this year. So there's an extra paragraph in the opinion letter this year, GESB 84. And technically, this GESB was actually delayed as a result of COVID-19. So technically, the Township early implemented the standard, so definitely you don't have to worry about it in 2020, which makes it much easier process next year. So with that, I'm going to hand it off to Kerry to go through the graphs. If you do have a hard time hearing us or anything, please feel free to stop by at any point in time, and we will make sure to clarify.
Okay, we're going to hear from Kerry now, and my only request, Kerry, is that you just speak slowly, kind of the what I'm doing right now in a very methodical manner. We're picking you up, but it's still somewhat fuzzy.
No problem. Is it coming through okay?
Yes.
Okay. So on the slide packet, which I believe is also included in your packet, I am going to talk through, turn to Slide 1. So the first slide looks at just your general fund revenue and gives a five-year comparison of the different same categories of revenue that the Township receives. So in total, the general fund took in $18.1 million in revenue. One item to note is that the golf course fund was closed this year, and the activity of the golf course now lies within the general fund. The revenue is in the all other revenue category, the third grouping, from the last that you see. The property taxes are the largest revenue source of the Township, representing 54, approximately 54% of your revenue. You do notice that increase from 2018 to 19. That is a result of the new millage for police and fire that was levied in December of 18 at 1.2 mils, which is approximately $2.1 million of revenue for the Township. Looking at Slide 2, this takes that property tax category and just displays it a little bit more detail for you by year. Again, you can see that the property tax revenue has hovered, up and down a little bit, but mostly around that $6.7 million mark. And again, the 2019 increase is the result of the additional millage. Looking at graph number 3, this looks at the general fund expenditures over a five-year period, broken down by the main different functions of the Township. Total expenditure for the general fund was about $18.4 million. And again, this now includes the golf course. One thing to note, in the general government, you'll notice that from 2018, the expenditures increased from about $3.2 million to $4.5. The $1.1 million OPEV contribution that was made in 2019 is in that grouping, and so that makes up the majority of that increase, along with some capital outlay items. On police and dispatch, you'll notice there's a little bit of an increase there as well. That is related to the dispatch capital outlay for the labor system and some other items. And there was grant revenue received for most of those expenditures. Looking now at Slide 4, this is, captures the general fund revenues and expenses in the bar chart. So the left is revenue, the right bar, right here, is the expenses. You can see that the expenditures exceeded the revenues this year. There is one other piece, there's other financing sources and uses that also get compiled in. That is your transfers or asset sale numbers and bond proceeds, which would be from the debt or from the fire truck. So you actually did increase your fund balance this year because those numbers get in. You added about $1.2 million. The top line that you're looking at there is a $4 million roughly line. That is your total fund balance, which is at about $4.6 million at the end of 2019. The line below that represents your unassigned fund balance, and we'll go into more detail on the next slide. But the unassigned fund balance is the fund balances is there with no restrictions on it. That 14% that you've talked in there, that is the percentage you get when you take the unassigned number of the $2.6 million and divide it by your annual expenditure. And what that tells you is you have about 1.7 months of unassigned fund balance available if revenue stops coming in to the Township that's available to use. So this next slide takes that total $4.6 million that we talked about being the ending fund balance number and breaking it down into the different categories that are shown. So on here, you'll see this non-fundable portion. Again, this is in thousands, and that's about $27,000 in net prepaid expenses. A restricted portion, the $1.8 million, that is restricted for your construction code and for PEGC. The committed portion, so I should note that the restricted amount is outside restricted dollars that are required. Those are required by law to be restricted. The committed portion is committed by the Township, and that is the public safety millage. And that leaves the remaining unassigned bar at the $2.6 million, which is roughly about 57% of your fund balance is unassigned. And as I said, that represents about 14% of your expenditures each year.
Kerry, if I could just come in real quick. One key item, so Kerry mentioned that it's worth about 1.7 months of your expenses. So if you stop collecting revenue on January 1st, you would essentially have enough to last you for almost until February. The key item to point out is, given your fiscal year, which is a calendar year, mostly your property taxes come in early in January and then February. So technically, the amount that you have that's unassigned takes you through, and you have no issues with meeting your expenditures and paying your payments. I just want to point that out.
Thanks, Martin. Slide number 6 looks at your unfunded legacy costs. The orange bars represent your retiree healthcare, and the tail bars are your pension. The note at the bottom lets you know that the way the reporting runs, your pension plan is measured on a year lag, so the pension plan is as of 12/31/18, but the OPEV plan is as of 12/31/19. That is very consistent with your peers. It's just how the timing works for the MERS report. If you look at those bars, you'll notice that your liability decline for OPEV, if you recall me stating the $1.2 million contribution that was made that year is part of that, along with some changes in actuarial assumptions that brought that down. The pension increased very slightly. In the footnote to the statement, you would note that your pension is about 66% funded, and your OPEV is now 7.6% funded, where last year there would have not been funded. The last two slides take a look at two of your business-type enterprise funds. The first is the water and sewer activities. So this slide shows you the operating revenue and the operating expenses, which you can see are relatively stable year to year. Your unrestricted net position did increase this year, and I wanted to point out that this activity does not include your net, excludes the investment in what you have. Likewise, the solid waste fund also has pretty consistent revenue and expenses from year to year. An unrestricted net position, if you look at the four-year trend, remains pretty consistent at a high this year of $191,000. Are there any questions on the slides or in your review of the financials that Martin or I can help answer?
I will cover the letter, the trust to the board, over here.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Did he say he's going to review the letter, or they're done speaking?
I'm not sure. So Martin, do you still want to review the letter? Okay, so just, when you do that, Martin, just speak a little bit louder and slower.
Sounds good. If you have a hard time hearing me, please let me know. So with that, I will cover the letter. The first page of the letter is standard, describes the sections of the letter. On page 2, it's an item that we, it's a result of our testing. We did have some adjustments during the audit that we found the result of the testing. I did want to point out that overall, the Township did a very good job of preparing for the audit. We did find a couple or few adjustments, including depreciation expense and a couple other items, that did not affect your budget. It did not affect how you expended the money or how you accounted for it. It was more for the financial statement preparation. And as a result, we had to highlight it that we had those adjustments. However, the Township did pull those adjustments. The financial statements that you have in front of you are accurate, so you don't have to worry about that. I just want to point that out. And again, the Township did a really nice job of preparing for the audit. I believe the Finance Director, especially being new to the Township, did a very nice job of preparing and making sure that you were ready to start when we had it slated for the audit. And the Township were presenting so early, I think this is earlier, if not earlier than last year. Going forward, there's a few items that, so on page 3, we have just a general letter that addresses the pre-audit letter and talks about any issues that we had during the audit or anything that came up from the audit. And I would say that's pretty much standard, and there's nothing to really highlight. As I said before, the Township was very well-prepared for the audit this year. And then Section 3, which starts on page I, is various legislative and informational items. I was going to highlight just a couple items on these pages, starting with page 6. The Update Uniform Charter of Accounts. This item has been discussed over the last, let's say, around three years. And the state has been kind of pushing back the deadline. As of right now, especially with COVID-19, it is pushed back to the year 2022. However, with budgeting, we would recommend that the Township is ready for the implementation in 2021. But there's still some time to do that. On page 7, Revenue Sharing. One item that's a big question mark is with everything that's going on, COVID-19... One item that's a big question mark is with everything that's going on, COVID-19, what is going to happen with the revenue sharing? As of right now, the most recent projections are about a 15% decrease. However, it's very hard to determine. I would recommend that the township keep checking and keep checking the website for the date and seeing if there's any adjustments. On the good news, from what I've been seeing from other industries, in manufacturing and just economy in general, it does seem to be picking up much faster than people anticipated. I'm talking to bankers and finance individuals. I've been hearing that a lot of the projections that were initially coming out about a month or two ago, they're actually, the actual results are a little bit better than expected. Hopefully, that turns over into revenue sharing as well. And then I was going to scroll down to page 15, talking about upcoming accounting standards.
Hey, Martin, Martin? Martin, just hold on. We've, we seem to have lost your video connection. We can still hear you. Can you hear, and you obviously can hear us. So you're now appear to be coming back online here.
And there's not really a lot of changes. You've already implemented GFC 84, as I mentioned earlier. The next really big wave or big standard that's coming out is the ULEA standard. It will be effective for 2021 for you. So it's something to start thinking about and making sure that it's going to be set up for success, which we can definitely help the township doing that. And what the ULEA standard is, if there's any leases, you'll essentially have to record an asset and a liability on the book. Historically, it was just you were recording the payment when you were making the payment. I did want to, once again, I know Carrie mentioned it already, but the township did start funding OPEB. It's a very big item that the township has been successful in starting to do. I know this was discussed over the last few years, for many years. And overall, your assets in that for OPEB are about $1.3 million. And historically, it was zero. 60% funded. I know that you have plans to start funding that, including with the millet, but I just want to make sure to highlight that because it is a very big step. And your pension plan is funded around 66%. So you're over the threshold, like the state will set, that makes sure that you're at least 60% funded. I wanted to congratulate the township for starting funding the OPEB once again. And again, thank you very much for all the help during the audit. I know, like I said before, a lot of hard work by many individuals, and we just want to say thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Martin, for all your assistance as well. I think we seem to outdo each other every year. I think this is now the earliest that we've had an audit completed. And I think that goes to the tremendous work that's been done by Ginger Moriarty, our finance director. Let me count the ways. First of all, you came here in mid-season from another community. You had to learn how we do things here, or at least understand. And it was a totally different budget, totally different way of doing things, totally different standards. Then we threw in COVID, just to make it really interesting, which I think most communities, I don't know what your experience Plant Moran is, but I would think a lot of communities are still struggling with their audits because they haven't had people in here daily, even during the peak of the crisis, to come in and work on this. And it's a great testament to Ginger's steadfastness and her work ethic, and also the rest of her team at, in the clerk's office in the finance department for helping to put this together with the assistance of Plant Moran. So I would like to publicly congratulate Ginger again for all of your hard work on this audit. Tremendous job. Thank you, thank you.
Excuse me, I think Carrie's screen froze because she hasn't blinked in about three minutes.
Yeah, no, she's, she's giving us an icy stare there, I think, so.
Ah, you're, we can hear you, but we can't see you.
Okay, oh, okay.
So any other questions from the board, either for Ginger or for Plant Moran?
Yeah, I have a question about, on page two. Yeah, on page two of the letter, I couldn't, I couldn't quite hear whether you, could you speak a little bit about the internal control, the weakness in the internal control relative to how these journal entries that were made? And kind of explain that a little bit, and then share with us what's been, what steps have been taken to ensure that we're good going forward?
Is that it for Ginger?
I guess it's a question out there for whomever is best equipped to answer it.
Why don't we start with Ginger?
It's in the middle of the page two of the letter. A deficiency in internal control exists when?
So as it was stated earlier, that I came to the township basically at the end of November. I was here about five weeks and then started working on our preparation. I didn't have time to go through 1,800 general ledger accounts and intimately understand the transactions for every single account, but started audit testing. So some of the items that they're talking about are things that just take some time as a finance director to be aware of all of the activities. As it relates to the specific items, I prepared a letter and a statement to the board to address those so that the board is aware that each item that was brought up during the audit was corrected at the time that it was brought to my attention. So the items that they have listed there, for example, the Western Township Utility Authority, there was an investment that we pay annually at approximately $129,000. Between 2018 and 2019, that asset was reported in a different way on the paper. It was my mistake for not realizing that the formula did not include the investment. It was brought to my attention by the auditor that I was missing the $129,000 when I booked the investment for W2O. So I corrected it immediately, prepared the journal entry, and provided that to the auditor. The next item out there was related to depreciation expense. I relied on the fixed asset module, which is a new module to me. I had to rely that the information that was contained within the module was accurate, that the general ledger account information that was put within the system was accurate so that when depreciation was calculated, that would properly depreciate the expense to the department that owned the asset. I also relied on the vendor to help me prepare the depreciation report. And apparently, while they were remoting it to the system, didn't realize that we depreciate assets on a month-to-month basis rather than on an annual basis. So they provided instructions to change all the depreciation dates to December 31st and run by depreciation, which ended up only calculating one month's worth of depreciation. When I realized the mistake, they helped me undo the depreciation that we had done and went back and redepreciated all the assets in the system month-to-month so that we had an annual depreciation per assets that were purchased in prior years and partial depreciation expense recorded for those items that we purchased in 2019.
So just in layman's terms, can you just kind of explain generally what this means? So during the course of the audit, journal entries were proposed in order for the financial statements to be in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. What does that actually mean to somebody who's not?
Can I, can I take your crack at it, Ginger?
Sure, here.
I'm actually surprised, Bob, that there weren't a lot more issues, seriously. Because when you're in Ginger's position and you're coming in, you know, cold at the middle of November with not a lot of support, you've got to learn on the fly. Our systems, and we've improved tremendously over the last few years, all of our systems, now the financial transactions are being done real-time. So through our cash receipting, through accounts payable, et cetera, et cetera. But what happens is at the end of the year, you have to enter a number of year-end journal entries to finalize your financial statements. They weren't extremely well documented. They were buried behind work papers. Ginger was diligent in going through the financial statements and found the majority of them and just missed a couple. That's all it is, missed a couple of year-end journal entries, said, oops, missed it, fixed it, and now the financial statements are fine. It's just going to happen. It's a little bit of growing pains, but certainly nothing that concerns me, certainly nothing concerned the accountants. Just if we hadn't caught them and if we hadn't corrected them, the financial statements wouldn't have been correct, but we did, and we did.
Got it, thank you.
Does this have something to do with the longstanding practice in Plymouth Township where department heads overspend on a budget item but don't go back and update what they spent? So it's not that issue? Journal entries that have to be done to correct that? All right, so it's not that, all right.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One is on the personal property tax changes or items. I don't completely understand what's going on after the new law change in 2018, and how will we be affected, or what do we need to do to be prepared? Since this is being phased out, where we're being, there's a complex reimbursement system.
Is that a Plant Moran question?
Whoever can answer it well and correctly.
I could not hear very clearly.
The question, the question, Martin, deals with the phase out of the personal property tax by the state and what we should be doing to prepare for the eventual wind down of the reimbursement program over the next couple of years. Of course, that's assuming that the state has any money to reimburse us with. So you want to try that one, Martin?
The best thing, and I tell this to all my communities that I work with, is budget out ahead of time, not just one year, but look at two or even three years out to make sure you have enough funds to make up any difference. One item I do want to point out, as Carrie mentioned earlier, is that your fund balance is in a good position. But having those plans, the long-term plans, will be essential in order to make sure that the township is healthy financially.
Okay.
I could not hear that, but will, I may have to call you.
Well, he said plan ahead and your budget processes, so.
The next question has to do with personal use of township vehicles. In the past, we've had a hard time meeting the IRS rules with record-keeping and charging the employee the tax portion of the personal use. What did you find and what are we doing going forward? This is both Ginger and the auditors, because we've had, in the past, we haven't managed that properly. Personal use of township vehicles. In other words, commuting to work is not, it has to be charged, the employee has to pay tax on commuting to work, for example. I hear crickets.
Martin, can you hear us?
I can hear you, it was breaking up a little. Something to do with personal use of vehicles.
Correct.
Yes, it was. It's personal use of vehicles and the tax implications and what we need to be doing to comply with any applicable regulations.
So in order to comply, any personal use technically should be a W2 item for the employee. So it's taxed as a benefit. I, it does not have bearing, not an additional expense to the township. It's more of the fact that it becomes an income item for the employee. Numbers are usually very small, to be honest, based on my experience with other communities, working with communities. However, to be compliant, you should have those calculations to be able to include that on the W2 wager.
So did Plymouth Township include it in the 2019 W2s? Ginger? If you can't answer it tonight, an email back to us will help.
I was actually asked to calculate a depreciation and IRS benefit for a DPW vehicle. I was contacted by Payroll, who was preparing the year-end payroll.
Can't hear a thing you're saying. Sorry. Did not, it's not, I can't understand what you're saying.
There was one vehicle I was asked to calculate the depreciation for on a vehicle in our DPW department. Payroll contacted me and indicated that there was a fringe benefit for that vehicle and asked me to prepare a calculation to send to them.
So we only have one vehicle where there's personal use?
It was a, yes, it was a DPW vehicle.
That seems unlikely, but we need to look at this and start tracking it. It's a simple thing, it's not a lot of money, but we need to be consistent. It's, you know, 55 cents a mile or whatever it is for personal use. I know most municipalities probably don't follow it closely because it's a nice perk, but still, the taxes or the FICA you have to pay is not a lot.
It continues to be in the bills that I've looked at, so yeah.
What you're saying.
The mileage and showing up on there that.
Well, that, no, that's, that's the mileage of their personal vehicle. This is a township-owned vehicle that I'm talking about.
So that's taking them home.
Right, nominally about 30% of a personal vehicle, of a township vehicle is personal use. And that's a taxable benefit.
Okay. Anybody else?
I want to read all the questions.
Yeah, go, go now.
Try, do it now.
The only comment that I wanted to point out, and I knew the question came up about the internal control matter and the adjustments. And I know that some of the comments were around year-end entries. I do want to highlight that it is a year-end adjustment only, and it has zero bearing on how the township budgeted and sent the funds during the year. And to be honest, looking at how little time the finance director had to prepare going into the audit and how new she was to the township, I personally believe she did an amazing job of getting ready for the audit. And I know the audit team felt the same way. The audit went very smoothly overall, and a couple items were honestly completely understandable.
No, we would agree, this has been a very smooth experience for us considering the fact that Ginger was so new to the township, and she's done a phenomenal job. Anybody else? Okay, then. What we are going to do is say goodbye to Plant Moran, and we'll move on to the next agenda item. So thank you, Plant Moran, folks. Carrie, Martin, thanks for being with us tonight.
Thank you.
So much for letting us do this.
Pardon me? Oh, yeah, we do need a motion to accept the 2019 audit report as submitted.
Yeah, so let me just speak to that real briefly. When I looked at the draft motion and then looked at the resolution, they're different. One speaks about approving the audit. One says, we act to receive and file it. And I went back to last year's motion. What we did there is we approved the resolution to accept and approve the audit. So I'm not sure what the technical, I believe the proper, I believe the proper route would be to accept and approve.
Approve, yes.
It's not, it's not a receive and file. So if someone's going to make a motion, then maybe they should use that language.
Okay, so there's the motion. If somebody wants to read it, just with the change.
I move that Plymouth Township Board of Trustees hereby adopt Resolution 2020-06-09-50, accepting and approving the audit of fiscal year 2019's financial statement reports, letters of required communication and follow-up recommendations to be filed with the state of Michigan by Plant Moran, and to acknowledge the receipt and file of the previously stated.
Motion's made by Trustee Heitman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Vorva. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Kirmy.
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Trustee Dorsevitz.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
communities in southeast Michigan, maybe, maybe anywhere in the state. Typically, a, a, a police force for a community the size of ours, or maybe larger, would have a police chief, a deputy chief, captains and lieutenants and patrol officer, sergeants and patrol officers. Uh, we, we are a very lean operation. We have one chief. We have no deputy chief, really. I mean, we don't have the position of deputy chief. We have no captains, which most of our other communities have. Uh, and we have two individuals who are called lieutenants, but really fulfill the role of, of a, of a captain or even of a deputy chief. So these, these gentlemen are, uh, Kudra and John Brothers are, um, are really in a very unique role, and they're non-union, which is also, um, very unusual. Um, under state law, under the Public Employee Relations Act, um, the two lieutenants could form their own, they could join a labor union if they wanted to. They, there's no, there's nothing against having a union of two people, a labor union, I should say. Uh, so, um, they could certainly form a union if they wanted to and join a union and create their own, but they, they really don't wanna do that. They, they would prefer to deal with us on a more professional basis. Uh, similarly, the, the dispatch supervisor is a, was a, a longtime dispatcher, and then when we created the position of dispatch supervisor, she be, she was promoted to that position. She tested for that position, and, um, and that again is, is a non-union, uh, position. So we wanna make sure that these individuals get the, uh, get the pay and benefits that, uh, that were, um, really promised to them verbally or in, in very limited written circumstances back when they were first hired. Um, it's, uh, it, it really, it's, it's, the only alternative would be, uh, would really be for, to, for these individuals possibly to join a, a labor union, which we really don't wanna see, because we, we like the, the professional relationship that we have with them. And, uh, it's been, it's been a long time in the making. I think I was first approached by the lieutenants a couple of years ago, but I, I kept putting them off because I wanted these contracts to get finished, and, uh, the time is now for, uh, for us to consider these agreements, and, and I would recommend your approval tonight. The chief is here. I don't know if you wanna add anything to that, if you wanna come forward.
I, I can, if it's fine from here, so.
The only concern, Tom, is that we, they wanna, we're still on TV and just wanna make sure.
I didn't want to spit all over Jerry. It, it really formalizes what is already understood between, uh, the township and the lieutenant positions. Uh, in, in fact, when they do, when the lieutenants were promoted, uh, Joanne Kubatis gave them a, a document that indicated what their pay and benefits are, uh, what their, uh, you know, pension, healthcare, and so on. So this just really formalizes it. Uh, the only unique thing or the different thing is that it, it creates a rank, uh, pay differential between the sergeants and the lieutenants, and that they get it automatically. Uh, meaning when the sergeants get a raise, the lieutenants get a raise. Uh, and if, if you kinda look at where they are with all the public safety in Plymouth Township, all the firefighters, all the police officers, all the dispatchers, uh, get raises based on the union contract. So it is automatic. For last many years, the last 15 or 20 years, the lieutenant's raises, uh, were, were lumped into the non-represented or the department heads, and I've always thought that was unfair. Uh, some years, they got more than others, and some years, they got less. But in the years that they got less, then you try to make up the differential next year, and now in order to do that, you have to give them a 4%, 5%, 6% raise, which nobody wants to do. So it, to me, it just makes much more sense to do it this way. Um, these lieutenants, they, they don't get overtime. I mean, that's another unique thing about their position, unlike just about every other lieutenant that I know of in the country gets overtime. So, uh, this, uh, again, I think is the right thing to do, uh, for these few employees. Happy to answer any questions.
Question. Um, so, so I get that, and I understand what you said and what Kurt said, and appreciate it. Where I kinda get hung up a little bit is that these are positions that are currently at-will employees, right?
No, I don't think they are, and that's, uh, I guess we'd have to get, get a legal opinion, but, and, or we could ask the other attorney in the room, but if these were, if these were at-will positions, we will never promote another lieutenant out of the rank of sergeant. I mean.
But set that aside.
Okay.
I understand what you're saying. I'm just saying, currently, these are at-will positions.
I, I.
And we're creating a contract, we're turning them into.
Well, there, there's nothing that says that they're at-will, and I, I would argue, certainly not their attorney, but I would argue that they're just cause employees. Uh, when they got promoted out of the union, there was, nobody ever told them, "Now you're a, now you're a, uh, uh, at-will employee." That was never communicated to any of them, and it was always my understanding that they were just cause.
The understanding, and, and we'd have to physically bring them in and ask them, but, or bring in Joanne Kubitis, but I think the, the understanding when these gentlemen were elevated to the position of lieutenant was that they would still enjoy the benefits of the, the, the COAM contract, and that would include, um, a, a for-cause termination.
And, and really, if, if I could explain that.
And it could get really complicated, because as you know, I, we can sue for anything we want, and, and whether or not you think you're at-will or whether or not you're gonna, if I were, if I were one of those lieutenants and I was abruptly terminated for no reason, I would go back to the contract, and I would just say, "Look, you promised me that I was going to be, be covered by this, by the terms and conditions of this contract," and then basically let the courts decide what that, what that's going to be. Um, this contract actually does provide, while it provides that they're going to be terminated, that they can only be terminated for cause, um, it does, it does explain what that means for a material act or misfeasance or malfeasance.
It does, yeah.
Uh, or a material violation of rules, et cetera. They also arguably could employ the, uh, the binding arbitration clause, uh, which would be on page three, section eight. Any controversy or claim arising out of this would go to arbitration. I just wanna make sure I'm not missing anything. But I, I, the way I would read it right now is that if there was a termination that they took, that they disputed, that that would go to arbitration first and not to a court of law, which would be similar to what we would have in, in a labor union.
Right.
Take, taking a termination to arbitration is a lot cheaper than, than going through a, a lawsuit.
Right. If I could add just two things to that, I don't know of any police department, at least in Michigan or in the country, where the lieutenants are at-will employees. Typically, in, in most police and fire departments, it's only the chief, and, uh, normally, it's, it's not any of the rank and file. Um, I forget what the second issue was, but I'm sure it was pretty important.
I know that, uh, back, uh, when I was a police officer, the, the lieutenants and other command people started a union. This was 30-some years ago.
Right.
And, uh, and so it's really common practice for them to be in unions. It's, this is really an anomaly in the, in the area, probably in the nation. And I've seen, so even 30-some years ago, the small community of Plymouth, they were, they were unionized.
Right. And the other, the, the point that I did wanna make was that, uh, these promotions are, are on merit, alright? It's, it's not, you know, a longevity thing or seniority thing. Uh, they have to compete for this position, and, and the, the township supervisor gets to pick the person, uh, for this position, so.
Well, Chief, I have a question, which is, are there any pending complaints about any of these three individuals regarding misfeasance, malfeasance, material violation of rules, regulations, policies, or procedures, insubordination, theft, dishonesty, or criminal act and conviction?
Uh, no, there's not.
Well, Plymouth Township was ahead of its time considering what's going on today with police department discussions. We have a lean organization. We had at-will employees that served essentially at the pleasure of the supervisor and the chief. Um, so I think we had a good system, and to make it clear, these people were, our intention was to have at-will employees, and we're making that change. I'm not opposed to making them for cause, but to make the record clear, the understanding was at-will from the township board. I don't know if that was the employees' understanding, but that was the township board's understanding.
It certainly was not my understanding, because I advised them, "If, if you're gonna become an at-will employee, I would join a uni, a union, or I would not get promoted." Uh, you gotta remember, there was.
You were advising employees to join a union as a management person?
I would. If, if they became a at-will employee, because I do not think a lieutenant should be an at-will employee. If, if you wanna fire the chief for some, some unreasonable reason, uh, go ahead, but not somebody that's a career that has two years to go for his pension, uh, and healthcare benefits, uh, no. I, I don't think that would be fair.
So let's go back to the one I talked about that, uh, earlier when I spoke with you. A number 10, um, on termination and not, or they retire, and they go to another community, and they receive, they are eligible for insurance. If we ever implement attestation, does this agreement preclude us from implementing it for any of these three people? If we implement it for the rest of the retirees who are working elsewhere and eligible for healthcare? Take it from your new employer first, Plymouth Township second, which is what's commonly done in business, and maybe other communities are doing it as people seek to streamline their OPEB liabilities and costs.
Yeah, that's, that's a good question, and, and it's my understanding that there's not one employee that that, that is, or former employee that is in that current position. I, I did check.
You did check, there's not one? Okay, a year ago, there was seven.
I mean, I'm sorry, for the police department. And there's also a incentive, if, if they go to another department and get hired, the incentive to opt out of our insurance is, is pretty lucrative. Uh, so they would opt out of it theoretically.
To get the $3,900.
For $3,900. Uh, and the other issue, the expectation that I believe the lieutenants would have is whatever you impose on the other rank and file, whether it's fire, police, or the POAM, or COAM, uh, it would, would apply to those, uh, lieutenants as well.
So Kurt, what do you think?
I, I totally agree. Um, the, if we were to impose attestation after retirement for any, whether that's fire, police, COAM, uh, or.
Salary.
Or these individuals, or salaried individuals, uh, that, that would, uh, that would not be impacted by this agreement or by their former union agreements.
Alright, so that's, I just wanna make that clear.
I mean, that's been, we've, we've studied that issue extensively here at the township, and, uh, we're very confident that attestation, uh, if it were implemented, would, would, uh, would not be impacted by, by this or any other agreement for, for a retiree.
So in the case of the dispatch chief, if we combine with some other communities and centralize our dispatch, say, Western Wayne County Dispatch comes someday, how do we handle this, what does this contract do? Is it binding us up from that implementation?
Well, they, they would certainly wanna hire her as the dispatch supervisor. She's that good, and, uh, we, we would, uh, we'd have to work out something.
If, if there's any kind of a merger like that, Chuck, we would, uh, we would have to renegotiate all of the contracts for our, for us. Let's say we merged with Livonia and Westland. We, we would have to have a, a master agreement that would cover all of the employees, and then even that agreement would probably have provisions for the former Plymouth Township dispatchers, the former Westland dispatchers, et cetera. Uh, it would, it's a, it's been tried in the past. I know Downriver, we, we tried it, gosh, long, you know, 30 years ago, but it's.
With the Plymouth City and the.
Yeah.
But the law's been changed since the 90s, that it makes it easier to do cooperative relationships.
Yes.
In the past, you had to hold everybody harmless, and it made it financially undesirable in most cases to make the combination.
It made it, the, the law changed, because I, I voted for it, uh, back in Lansing, and it, it's, um, it's, makes it easier, but it doesn't make it, uh, foolproof. I mean, it, it had streamlined the process with respect to the labor unions and, uh, and how the, how the contractual relationships would look, but there's still a lot of, a lot of legal, uh, contract and integration that would have to take place between the various employees, and it was really aimed at saving money more than, um, codifying acceptable labor agreements, and, and unions always have an opportunity to, to challenge whatever is, uh, is developed. Okay, any other questions? Then I would like a motion.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk.
I move to approve Resolution 2020-06-09-51, approving the employment agreements for police lieutenant John Brothers, Daniel Kudra, and dispatch supervisor Cynthia Foul, as submitted, and authorize the supervisor and clerk to sign.
Motion made by Clerk Vorva. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Heitman. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Trustee Dor Shavitz.
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you. I, I do appreciate the support of this board. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, item three is the storm drain agreement. We're gonna pull that for tonight. Uh, item four is the Andover Forest Water Main easement. Jeremy will be handling that one, and Jeremy, could you just remind us where this Andover Forest project is located?
Yeah, this is, uh, this is a 15-unit condominium subdivision that's, uh, north of Ann Arbor Road, just west of Rich Road.
Across from Picnic Basket.
It's the one across from, uh.
Picnic Basket.
Picnic Basket, yeah.
CBS, yeah.
I'm sorry, this is the new Polte subdivision?
This is Anthony Randazzo. I don't know the name of the, uh.
Did Randazzo sell it to Polte?
Not yet. It's sort of a joint venture right now.
Uh, 'cause there is a Polte sign.
Yeah.
If you, if you frequent the Picnic Basket, as some of us do, trying to make sure we support local businesses, you will see that sign in front of it.
I think Randazzo got it started. They did a lot of the groundwork, literally, and I think Polte will be actually building the homes. So, um, you know, it's their own business arrangement, and I don't wanna get involved in it.
So you would expect Polte to be signing the storm drain agreement, or whoever the new owner is? Is that right, Jeremy?
So whoever, whoever the new owner is would be signing the storm drain agreement, correct? Yeah, so I don't, I don't know if Anthony Randazzo is officially sold to Polte or what that.
I, I don't believe he has, and I don't think we have any records to that effect. So if he, if and when he does sell it, that all of these easement rights will, will run with the land.
Run with the land.
Okay, can we move it, Bob? I'm just, just a reminder. Any questions on this, then? Then I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Supervisor.
Trustee Heitman.
I move to adopt Resolution 2020-06-09-53, authorizing the town clerk, township clerk, township attorney, and township engineer to sign the water main easement for Andover Forest Condominium Subdivision 1137, and to authorize recording of the same.
Okay, motions made by Trustee Heitman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Vorva. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Dor Shavitz.
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to item five, the Siandover Forest Sanitary Sewer Easement. Jeremy, pretty self-explanatory?
Yep, this is just a 20-foot sanitary sewer easement. It includes an extension along Ann Arbor Road and then the sewer within the condominium itself.
Okay, any questions? Then I would like a motion on this.
So, whoever the new owner is would be signing the storm drain agreement, correct? Yeah, so I don't know if Anthony Randazzo is officially sold to Polte or what that-
I don't believe he has, and I don't think we have any records to that effect. So, if he, if and when he does sell it, that all of these easement rights will run with the land. Okay, can we move it, Bob? I'm just, just a reminder. Any questions on this, then? Then I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Supervisor?
Mr. Heitman?
I move to adopt Resolution 2020-06-09-53, authorizing the township clerk, township attorney, and township engineer to sign the water main easement for Andover Forest Condominium Subdivision 1137 and to authorize the recording of the same.
Okay, motions made by Trustee Heitman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Vorba. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Dorsevitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes? Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to item five, the Andover Forest Sanitary Sewer Easement. Jeremy, pretty self-explanatory?
Yep, this is just a 20-foot sanitary sewer easement. It includes an extension along Ann Arbor Road and then the sewer within the condominium itself.
Okay, any questions? Then I would like a motion on this.
Mr. Supervisor?
Mr. Heitman?
I move to adopt Resolution 2020-06-09-54, authorizing the township clerk, township attorney, and township engineer to sign the sanitary sewer easement for Andover Forest Condominium Subdivision 1137 and to authorize the recording of same.
Motion's made by Trustee Heitman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Vorba. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes? Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Trustee Dorsevitz?
Yep.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good, thank you. Jeremy, you can go if you want. I don't want to hold you hostage here, if you want to go.
No, he's got to sign some, they've got-
He's got to sign some stuff. Okay, then, you're staying. You're grounded. Okay, item six is Planning Commission Reappointment Recommendations. I'd appreciate your consideration and support for the reappointment of Ms. Kendra Barberena and Mr. Keith Postel to the Planning Commission for a term ending June 30th, 2023. Their resumes are attached. They've served on the board for many years and have done a fine job for us. May I ask if-
Are you sure Keith wants to serve again?
Yeah, he's said he wants to. And does Trustee Dorsevitz agree with that claim that the supervisor gave them?
I think that's fine.
What's going on with, I mean, you're not very busy right now, or?
No, they're very busy. He's, he's been, you know, the COVID situation has impacted, you know, many of us in different ways and, you know, but I know he wants to stay on board. And I, I think he's sincere about it, and we'd like to have him back as soon as possible.
Okay.
So, okay, any other questions? Then I need a motion.
Mr. Supervisor?
Mr. Heitman?
I move to reappoint Ms. Kendra Barberena, Barberena, and Mr. Keith Postel to the Planning Commission for a term expiring June 30th, 2023.
Thank you. Motion's made by Trustee Heitman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Vorba. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Clerk Vorba, yes? Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Trustee Dorsevitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Next is, the next item is a discussion regarding the Gulfview Neighborhood Park project at Ann Arbor Trail, Beck and Powell, and county funding for park projects in general. And Bob, if you could, this is not going to be an electronic item on the agenda, but I was thinking, if you could go to last week's agenda?
Oh, yeah.
It was in there?
Yeah, it was in the pack.
So, while Bob is fishing that out, I'm going to just read off of my cover memo for this. You may recall that on September 10th, 2019, the Board of Trustees authorized the study of a new neighborhood park using the so-called Triangle property founded by Beck, Ann Arbor Trail, and Powell Roads adjacent to Hilltop Golf Course. This project would utilize some of the more than 150 trees that are being donated by Wabasto as part of their project at Hagerty and Schoolcraft. This simple community park concept would encompass trees, walking paths, park benches, and possibly a shelter facility depending on cost. While it was my intent to hire a college student or go to U of M or MSU to draft a plan for this project, it actually, we actually found it was cheaper and easier to have McKenna Associates do it. We were not getting any, any interest from the MSU people, and the U of M people were willing to do it for a fee of almost, of at least $4,000. So, it was just cheaper for us to have McKenna do it. So, we attached at our last meeting the concept plan, which is part of that, you're right on that agenda pack there, Bob, developed by McKenna along with a summary and project recap prepared by Laura Haw, who will be attending tonight's meeting. So, we have a problem with whatever we decide to do or not do in the year 2020. Because of the COVID crisis, we will more than likely not receive our annual Wayne County Parks grant allocation, which was expected to be about $68,000 this year. So, it would still be in our best interest to have a, and I hate that word, shovel-ready, but a shovel-ready recreation project ready to go should this money somehow be freed up if the county were to get a huge grant or reimbursement of some sort that they could pass down to us, or at least have a project ready to go for next year. In any event, we need to discuss this project in light of these unforeseen developments and make a determination on where we plan to go in the future. So, what we have right now on the table is a very preliminary study of what this Gulfview Park site would look like. We have no money to do anything right now. So, we have no money to do, to put a shovel in the ground, or cut a tree limb, or plant a tree. Ah, I'll take that back. We could plant trees, because Wabasto is still moving forward, and those trees aren't going to last forever. And they are waiting on us for a determination on what we would like to do with those trees. I don't want to-
What do you mean by waiting? You mean the trees have been purchased?
The trees are, the trees are available, but I don't think they're going to wait. We could ask to see if they would wait another year. That seems pretty unlikely, because I think they're buying all of these trees in bulk right now for their, for their project, their campus at Hagerty and Schoolcraft. So, I don't want to go-
So, we need to check on that, so?
Well, yeah, but I, there's some other issues involving Wabasto that I don't really, I don't want to go begging to them, because I'm afraid what they're going to want in return. They're, you know, everybody's, everybody's blaming the virus for everything that's, you know, gone wrong in their lives, and I just don't want to, I don't want to ask them unless I absolutely have to. But the offer is still on the table for these trees. It's 150 trees, that's a lot of trees, folks, and we had never planned on planting all of them at this Triangle Park. We, we meaning myself, Laura, any of you guys, if you know of any, and we've identified several locations in the township where we could plant these trees, Township Park has got a lot of need. We have it in some of our other parks and public spaces. We were even thinking of basically giving trees to the school district so that they could put some on the public easements, not on their property, but on the easements between the sidewalk and the street in certain locations. So, we have, that's what I call a good problem, because we're all, we're looking to find places to put these trees in public, in public spaces. So, this Triangle property would be a very likely candidate, but from a planning standpoint, it doesn't make sense to plant trees and then build around them. You build first and then you plant your trees. But we're in a, we're in a bit of a trick bag here, and we acknowledge that. So, I'm just giving you some of the, some of the hurdles that we face. They're tree-related, they're definitely money-related, but they're also policy-related in that I don't want to proceed on anything unless I have at least a tentative buy-in or approval from this board. I understand, too, Jack, Trustee Dempsey has provided us with some other documentation tonight that he has drafted. And I would, when Laura's done, Jack, I would invite you to share with us your thoughts and proposed direction on this particular project. So, after that lengthy explanation, I'd like Laura to come forward. If you could take the mask off, because I think you're going to be hard to hear with all of our primitive technology here.
Thank you, and good evening.
Hey, how you doing?
I do have a presentation to give. Bob, I had, I emailed it to you before this meeting, but I have it on my computer. If you'd like me just to hook it up like I normally do for Planning Commission.
But Laura, isn't it part of the agenda pack from last week?
It's kind of like broken out into a more visual. I have hard copies, too, but it might be nice to kind of look at.
I don't think the hard copy was in this board packet. It was in last week's.
No, no, it was in last week's, but I think she's got more than what was even in last week's board packet. So, we'll do it. Yep. You wanted to pass out, let's pass out the hard copies now.
Thank you.
Okay, so we've got hard copies now, and we're getting really close to visualizing it as well.
We have not had a public hearing or-
No.
Received a lot of public input on this yet, correct?
We actually have. We've, we've received, I want to say about five emails from residents going back to the, back to late last year when this concept was first proposed.
So, nothing formalized or whatever, right?
Well, no, we haven't had any public hearings or charrettes or anything like that to involve the public directly. Obviously, if we had, COVID would have, would have messed that up, too. We can't get it up there, Bob?
It's opening. I got it. I'm connected to my hotspot right now, and it's an 8Mag file, so it'll, it'll open. It's just taking a few minutes.
Have the arts people that they've, they've formally expressed, expressed a desire to be involved in this?
Arts people have, arts people have expressed an interest in the project from the standpoint of public sculpture and things like that. We've heard directly from some of them at board meetings from past years when we were talking about the golf course in general. But I know there is interest from the Plymouth Community Arts Council and some other private individuals about possibly integrating some arts and culture into the site as well.
It's moving along.
There we go.
All right.
Rah.
Do you want to expand on that, Bob? Isn't it down below the-
Only 19. It'll go cut.
Plus, right? Plus means bigger.
Yeah, plus means bigger. You're supposed to be the IT, I'm sorry.
Doesn't mean I know. Doesn't mean I know what's wrong with your printer. More of a concept guy.
Okay.
Okay, so, Trustee Dorsevitz, maybe if you can just kind of scroll through as I, as I talk and go through the presentation, okay?
Hold the mic close.
So, I wanted to start just kind of with a recap of the subject site. So, it's township-owned. It's nine acres. It's at the northeast corner of Beck and Ann Arbor Trail, and it's currently a vacant open space. There are a number of invasive species on the site, including cottonwoods, black locusts, and box elder. Next slide. I wanted to provide a little background on how this concept arrived, and first acknowledge that it is zoned public lands, which is intended for recreation use by the public. So, that's an excerpt of our township zoning map. The next slide shows two goals from the township's adopted master plan that are tied to the site. So, that's providing a safe and efficient circulation system, including for pedestrians and bicycles, and for promoting active living and healthy lifestyles in the township. Also related to the master plan is the future land use map. So, this prescribes what land is planned for. And you can see on this excerpt here that it is planned for recreation space, which since at least 1994 has been planned for recreation space. So, for 25 years at least, this has been thought of in that concept and tested over time as multiple plans have been adopted and embedded by the township. The joint recreation master plan with the city of Plymouth also talks about recreation in the township and shows that we are actually deficient in terms of our open space. There's also a regional master plan that's by SEMCOG, and this is a plan from last year. It talks about, this quote here is basically saying that when parks are accessible, they are, they are used and valued more, and that seems very obvious. But I think it's important to note that even though this is green space in the township today, it's not accessible, it's not usable. We would call this, it's not programmable. So, you couldn't take, you know, your family in a stroller, or your kids on bikes in it, even though it's there. And then the second objective that I wanted to mention from the SEMCOG plan, you know, SEMCOG acknowledges basically what this quote is getting at, and I think it's important for the township to also consider that, you know, this board, the Planning Commission, the MITC Authority, the Chamber of Commerce, we've all been able to tout that the community is a quality place to do business and live in. And that concept is impacted by the community's quality of life, which is shaped by its amenities. So, aspects such as quality green space, walkability, and recreation make, they're all aspects that make the township more attractive for investment. The next slide shows the preliminary design concept that we developed for Gulfview. I'd like to note that this is intended for a passive park. I think if you zoom out a little.
Yeah, Laura, could you, could you expand on what is a passive park? I know what it means. I used that term back in the fall of last year, and I got excoriated on social media, because people thought, they didn't know what it meant, and they attributed all sorts of nasty things to it, so.
Like what?
That, it was like we were insulting people, that it was, that you weren't-
Active?
Active, that you were passive, that you were just not worthy, you know, like you were just going to sit there-
The park for lazy people.
Do nothing. And it's like, I, everybody, not everybody, but, you know, people who wanted to have a negative connotation, they certainly took it that way and used it. So, Laura, you're an urban planner. Could you tell us what passive park means?
Sure. So, the term passive is the opposite of active, and those are two ways that we define park space, and that's used by the Michigan Department of Natural Resources and their inventories. And so, passive doesn't mean not, not, not active, not recreation, but it's a, it's a different form. So, an example would be passive could be landscaping, walking trails, biking trails, very similar to what's proposed here. Outdoor seating, gathering spaces for small groups. Active might be soccer fields, baseball fields, a spray park. So, there's, there's quite a difference in the intensity of use between the two. So, for a passive park, there's a number of walking paths that are proposed. This utilizes the existing sidewalk that runs along Ann Arbor Trail. We wanted to make sure that that existing infrastructure was incorporated. So, there's two main loops. There's the western loop, which is larger, and then the eastern loop, which is smaller. Combine the two loops, if you did a giant loop around them, either walking, running, or biking, it's about a half a mile. And the interior of the larger western loop was intentionally left as open space to either afford future development or amenities, or to allow for informal recreation. So, maybe a game of frisbee, or a kid kicking around, you know, a soccer ball with his dad. And then in the eastern loop, that's where the majority of the invasive species are. We do see an opportunity, since this is a nice half-mile loop, for mile markers, and that could tie into the existing trail network at Township Park for more of a coordinated system. There's also several locations on the plan that are called out, called out as cultural installations. So, these could have public art or other features that kind of bring identity to the space. There's also seating planned around the park area- There's also seating planned around the park area as rest stops. Um, in the northeast corner, you'll see that there's, uh, seven parking spaces that are added where people, um, currently informally park. Um, this, this would be additional parking for, uh, the golf course, but also for the park. And then in the middle of the park, um, slightly on the east end, we are recommending a naturalized meadow. This would be, um, a type of green infrastructure, um, that could naturally treat the, uh, stormwater. And then there are also several crosswalks that are planned as extensions out from the park. Um, as a neighborhood park, uh, there's an allure that you would be walking to the site. And so improving the safety in those connections, we know that people are already out there and doing that. So this just formalizes and makes that space safer. And then lastly, as supervisor Heisey noted, um, we have approximately 150 trees as a donation from Wabasto. This plan would incorporate 80 as illustrated, although there, there is the potential for more trees. Um, and that would certainly, um, enhance the tree canopy. The next slide, I wanted to touch on some of the community support that we, we have heard, uh, thus far. Um, the first is that, that joint recreation plan that you have with the city, as part of that plan process, there was a rather robust public engagement. There were multiple meetings at both the township and the city. And there was also telephone interviews, um, to many residents. And that plan documents that both the city and the township residents believe that their recreation facilities and programs enhance the economy, property values, and quality of life. And that 68% feel that sidewalks and the walkability of the community is very important. And then I threw in this quote, because I think it's important to note that, um, we know, we know that residents, um, do value the existing assets and that this is an important component, um, of the township. The next slide also details some of the recommendations that the, um, Township Arts, Recreation, and Heritage Committee, uh, made to the Board of Trustees. So this would be increased walking, running options, increased biking, and increased awareness for cultural amenities. The next slide is a quote, um, from Wendy Harless, Chair of the Historic District Commission. She writes, "This piece of property has been underutilized for decades. Creating a naturalized park space here is a great opportunity to connect the west side of the township with Township Park and the Ann Arbor Trail area. Creating walking paths and biking trails would benefit the entire community with more naturalized green space to enjoy." The next slide is a letter of support from Beth Mead, who's the president of the Canton Community Center Foundation. We've been working with Beth on securing, um, and her team really on securing some grants, um, for, um, future pathways and trails in, in the Plymouth and surrounding communities. So Beth writes, "Plymouth, Plymouth Township, and Canton Township have been working with the Canton Community Foundation to create a plan for increased connectivity of our paths and trails as well as further, um, as further develop parks for our residents. This effort is the result of an overwhelming response to a community-wide survey that proved the need for pedestrian paths and connections within these neighboring communities." Uh, she goes on to say that they support the efforts of this township as, um, they seek approval and funding to develop the green space of Golf View Park. "Any programs that can help lead to healthier lifestyles of our residents are strongly encouraged and supportive."
And Laura, the reason the Canton Community Foundation is involved is because they are now the fiduciary for the Plymouth Community Foundation. So, um, they are one in the same now, even though it's run out of Canton. That's why they're involved.
It's been taken back from Ann Arbor?
Yes. Which was a really good thing. Um, Canton is much more, uh, responsive and accessible and interested in the Plymouth community. And their, their Board of Directors has a few Plymouth people on there as well. And, and they communicate with us regularly now. And before, uh, there was no communication.
Yeah, there's several. Several.
Yeah. So they have money, you know, and they, they know how to get money. And so that's a, a possible supplemental funding source for any future project.
Correct. And then I think it's just also important to note that as we kind of transition through this, um, COVID pandemic, that we see the importance of, um, open space and trails and recreation as part of our critical infrastructure. And, um, I think we've come to realize that these spaces really have, um, a powerful way of, um, improving the morale and, um, and adding some comfort during challenging times. The next couple, um, slides are pictures of the Arnold Pavilion dedication last week. Um, just to note that, you know, this was well-attended. Um, and there is definitely a drive and push by the administration to, um, make this amenity happen. And it shows the value in creating, um, public recreation. We've also received, um, emails about how great this is.
We need more bike racks, by the way.
There are, there are a number of bikes there.
At 2,500 apiece.
All right. I just had to throw that in there.
Thank you.
But we have heard, um, positive comments from residents about this park. Just sending a thank you, um, for, for creating this. Um, so the next, uh, slide is just saying next steps. And, you know, as stated in our memorandum, we do recommend that the board consider, um, utilizing this property, um, to create a long-lasting amenity for the community. Um, as mentioned earlier, trustee Dempsey provided some additional thoughts in a memorandum. And, um, there is a listing in there of how this could be phased, um, in a manageable way. And it does seem like this project could be broken up, um, into different pieces and really leveraged as funding, um, opportunities come along. And that includes, uh, the donation of the Wabasto trees. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Laura? And then I'll turn it over to Jack.
Laura, is there any consideration about how we would handle dogs in the park?
That has not been, um, like shown, shown on this plan. I know we have talked about it at, um, past board meetings, um, when we initially, um, discussed this. Um, this might be an opportunity for the township to allow dogs on leashes. Um, but a dog park itself, where there's a gated area that dogs run free, that is not proposed as part of this, um, plan.
So allowing dogs or something, this is probably the highest frequency request I get is, "My dog, I can't take the dog in the park. Is there a place where I could take it?" Uh, right now, they can use that as a dog park, informally. So some people are using it.
They do today.
Right. So that is their outlet. So if we do something, we don't want to preclude that.
Right. Now, from a recreation standpoint, there's a, there's a big difference between a dog park, a formal, official dog park. Lot of maintenance, liability issues, accessibility issues. They're, they're, uh, I like them, but, but, um.
They're high maintenance.
They're high maintenance. I mean, it's kind of like grandchildren. They're fun to play with, but at the end of the day, you can give them back and you don't have to worry about them. Um, dog parks are similar in that we end up having to maintain them and clean up after them. And it's a, it's a pain. Um, what we had talked about last year was, we could have, we could make this a leash-only dog, uh, it would be, it would be.
Leash, allowed, dogs allowed on leash only?
Leash-only park. And clean up after yourself. We could put, uh, doggy bags out there for people. Hopefully they'll use them. But we know that at, well, some of our smaller parks like Miller and, uh, Brentwood, that people will go out there and walk their dogs and that they don't clean up after them. And, you know, and it's very difficult for us to enforce that because those, those are our smaller neighborhood, um, pocket parks and very hard to enforce.
Four times in the past two weeks, we've been walking in Township Park and people have had dogs. Two of the four were on leashes and two of the four were just running around with the people. First ones I called the police on and, uh.
The people or the dog?
The people. Yeah, both. And basically confronted the gentleman and learned a few new words I didn't know before. But, uh, yeah.
So.
It's important, if we're gonna do it, they gotta be on leashes.
Well, it needs to be on the shopping list, so I'm just bringing it up.
Yeah.
The other item is, the idea of the meadow is a great idea. Was that your idea?
Our landscape architects.
Good. Because, uh, in fact, that's a growing trend to reduce lawns, which are not naturally sustainable. It require a lot of water, a lot of pollution, a lot of work, a lot of chemicals. Now, let's go back to lawn. Um, put on the consideration list, please, considering a no-mow lawn. They exist. I can give you a background on that. You don't have to mow it. You don't have to water it. Once you get it started.
It's grass?
Yes.
Well, it's a, it's a grow, are you talking like a grow zone, Chuck?
No, it's actual grass. And what it does, it tends to be longer. It doesn't look like a golf green.
Yeah.
It lays over once it matures. So some people won't like it because it doesn't look like a golf green. But you don't have to mow it and you don't have to water it and you don't have to fertilize it. Uh, there is some of this that's used on highway, uh, medians and bridges, uh, but not quite. If you have, if you need some background on it, I can give it to you. Uh, I've personally experimented with it and the results have been good. But if you have somebody like the township that can really manage it, maybe the results will be much better.
Okay, that's good. Um, Laura, I had a question for you. And that involves the, if you could scroll down on the map, the really, oh, up, I guess. Yeah, the visual, right, stop. Uh, this whole area that we're looking at right there, this is the very wooded area. It's largely inaccessible. There's a ton of debris out there from many years, from both us and the golf course. Um, I'm not looking for an estimate tonight, but we, we really need to get a, a really decent estimate on what's it gonna cost to remove, uh, all of that, uh, woody debris and, and, and really clean that up a, a, a lot. Um, it's a, it's just a, it's not a good, uh, a good amenity. There's vines in there. There's all other invasive stuff that's been.
Which piece are you talking about?
Pardon me? Well, the whole, this whole.
Are you talking about where there's fill dirt has been dumped? It was dumped in the mid-'90s. It was rough. It's right in that area, right where the.
There you go, okay.
In that area.
Yeah.
You can't mow it. It's a rough.
Oh, it's, it's all.
Many fill dirt dumps have been in there and it's.
Yeah.
Never been leveled off.
Well, I'm not even looking to have it leveled off if we, unless somebody wants to do that. But I'm just thinking, oh, darn my things. There we go. It's, this is just a really rugged, nasty wooded area in through here. And it's, it's inaccessible and, uh, I'm not looking to turn it into, uh, parkland, but I, it's gotta get cleaned up.
But now it's, it's encroaching onto Ann Arbor Trail.
Yeah, yeah.
And the bikers have now moved farther into, and I've seen it the last two weeks easily, they're, the bikers are in the lanes.
Well, that, that's also Wayne County guys. So, I mean, I went.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I mean, I went through here, I went through here in the spring with the park staff. And this sidewalk, right through here, that was clean. And they had, they had brush cut everything around it. Now, there's a lot of scrub and garbage trees up through here that's mostly in the Wayne County easement.
But it also continues to, the same thing. It also continues between the parking lot.
Right.
And then the entrance to the park. Same thing. Oh, that's all scrub and invasive. Yeah.
It's affected the fences.
Well, yeah, that's a really messy area too. And I don't know how much of that's also, or the golf course, or, or both, but.
Well, there's fill in there also.
Yeah.
Mounds of fill. They, gradually, they could pick away at that and use that fill on the golf course.
Well, this is a really nasty area too. I'm not even, I'm not even thinking about that part yet. I'm still thinking about this. Because otherwise, you're gonna have people marching around here that, then they're gonna be looking into this garbage forest. And, and I, and again, I don't want to wipe it out. I just think we need to take out the bad and leave the good and let.
We think that'd be a priority.
Let the good thrive more, yeah.
Well, another item is, uh, the surface. We'll need to talk to runners or walkers. I'm not a big supporter of putting more concrete, hard surface down. Maybe the walkways can be made out of some new invention or something that is not hard, that is permeable to water. But pouring concrete is the easy no-brainer way that, in my opinion, is not the right way to go. Especially since they don't have good longevity with tree roots and soil moving. So I'd like you to put that on the shopping list. Some type of non-concrete walking path.
The joggers also want that accessibility year-round, which means our guys are gonna have to brush the snow off.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that.
Well, you don't have.
It's not that, I mean, it's not that long of a pathway.
Yeah.
For joggers. It's only a half-mile all the way around. It's not that long.
Well, they'll probably combine it with a much larger route that they're gonna take.
Well, yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So what, what are you saying? You want concrete or you don't care or what?
I'm saying, I, I, keeping it clean for joggers in the wintertime, I'm not sure.
Yeah, that, that's some, that's a, because a few people have complained, we've now institutionalized it. And you're right, Bob. It isn't a requirement that we clean for, uh, people to run all of our paths in the wintertime.
Well.
I know they complain. I mean.
Yeah, but we do. We do. Unfortunately, well, we do, so. Okay, uh, any other questions for Laura? Let me, can we back up into the middle area, the, the open space? So that, you have that listed as lawn area, Laura. Is that, uh, are you thinking, is that like, uh, manicured lawn, mowed lawn? Or is that sort of the?
Isn't that the meadow?
Is that the meadow that Chuck was talking about?
The meadow is just to the east. Um, it goes on both sides of the, the pathway that goes north and south there.
Right.
So the lawn area could be any, any one of those that you just mentioned, Supervisor Heisey. It could be manicured, um, which wasn't really the vision that the landscape architect had. But, um, it could be, um, maintained so that you could at least access it for, um, you know, throwing a ball around. Um, or it could be more naturalized. It could also be kind of divided. So maybe some more naturalized on the, the east end, um, and reduce the amount of maintenance that you need for that whole area.
But if you naturalize it, i.e. a meadow, you can't play or walk in the meadow.
Correct.
So that, that, I don't like that you would take up too much space where you can't walk or play.
It's also, this is not much of a topic, this isn't a topographical map, but, but it's, this would be the low area here. And then it gets progressively tall, uh, hillier and.
Really?
Higher as it gets to this area, right there.
Yeah.
It's not flat. I mean, it's, it, it's undulating and it, and it gets rapidly steeper as you get, as you get up there, so.
And I would say no golfing in here.
No, I mean, that's not, the, the plan is not.
We do today. You see every, all of them.
Well, there's people hitting balls around.
Yeah, but it's an underutilized piece of property and, you know, people are chip-practicing their chip shots.
Okay, but it's not meant for golf.
Right.
And it's not supposed to be part of the golf course.
That's why I like Chuck's idea of, uh, the lawn. That's kind of an interesting.
What, the no-mow?
Yeah.
Yeah, but you want people to play though, too, so.
Well, no, you can play on no-mow grass.
Oh, okay.
It, it, it's not five feet, it's not 10 inches tall.
Okay.
It just lays down. It looks like somebody who is balding that lays over their hair.
Wow, getting personal.
Hey, hey, be careful. Hey, that gentleman out there.
Wow, yeah, wow, holy cow. All right. Um, and just, Laura, as an aside, if, if people are looking for trees, I know the golf course itself, Hilltop Golf Course people are, are, they definitely need trees along Beck Road. Um, and I'm sure they have some other locations that they would be interested in right now for tree planting. So let's keep that in mind. What are, when we get back into the forest area here, what are all these little dots? What do that represent? Trees?
Yeah, so those are the existing trees. So when you look at that middle area, um, you can see where the, the trees themselves are actually at. And then all the other green space that's really outside of that, that's just scrub. So there is a lot of.
Scrub.
To be removed.
Are those cataloged, those trees, those numbers have an index?
There is a tree survey for the property, yes. And if anyone's interested, I can, I can email out that Excel file.
Yeah, I'll want to look at that index, please.
Okay.
And also the, the shopping list of Wabasto trees. We'd like to have some influence on that, you know, so we don't have, I don't want Bradford pears, you know, that kind of a tree. They don't last long. Uh, they're not very robust.
Well, again, if any board members have, uh, if you've been approached by a resident, and again, we, we're not talking about private property. We have a, we have a separate tree program this year for private property. But if there's any public lands where you think we need some trees, maybe Miller Park, maybe, uh, uh, you know, maybe some of our, our, like, school district property. Um, we could go crazy with school district property, so I don't want to overdo that. But it's gotta be beneficial to, to both sides, not just to the school district.
Brentwood has requested some for their park.
Who has?
Brentwood.
Brentwood, yeah. Okay, any other questions for Laura? So Laura, don't go away. I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Dempsey. So Laura, don't go away, I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Dempsey and, uh, he's got some comments and ideas as well.
Yeah, I wanna talk about both, um, the exciting aspect of this and then the concerning aspect. So I think we've already talked a lot about the exciting aspect. This meets the needs of the public as they've expressed it. It takes really a sad and, um, not just underutilized, but, um, piece of property that's got all these invasives, got a few trees, but a lot of scrub, et cetera. When I drive by there and I do all the time, I rarely see anybody, whether they're walking a dog or playing golf, I hardly ever see anybody there, except last week when I was coming back from the Miller, uh, Park, uh, dedication, here was a father and a, and a child crossing um, Beck Road, coming from the west to the east and it just reminded me of what this, the potential of this property could be. If you could scroll Bob to the east a little bit so we can see more of, more towards the back.
To the east?
The other way, the other way.
Beck is the west.
Okay, sorry. I'm directionally challenged.
What do you mean, they were coming across right here?
Exactly.
Yeah.
And, uh, you can't really do that from south to north or north to south on the east side of Beck, cause there's no, there's no path there, there's no curb.
And at four o'clock.
There's no, there's a sidewalk there.
Well, this sidewalk-
Exists.
Yeah.
Correct.
And it wraps around Powell.
Yes, I'm talking about coming northbound or southbound on Beck, on the east side of Beck. So there is no sidewalk that crosses on the right-hand side of that intersection. Now, there are some trees existing along Beck Road between Ann Arbor Trail and Powell. They're sad, they're girdled, they're, some of them are dying and if you look at this image, you can just imagine what that would look like with all of these trees, a diverse set of trees. And back to the dedication last week, what did we see when, when several of us were there, we saw a community come out, they were enthusiastic. It's enhanced, it's got more uses, you saw the pictures, um, you also saw the bike rack which was full of bikes. So again, this board makes good decisions when it comes to public, you know, public uses and public needs. You should accept my compliments without joking about it. So, I mean, this hits all these points. So let me turn to the concern. The concerning part of this is if we don't act, if we don't approve this as a concept and move forward, what's going to happen?
Nothing.
Nothing. Or at worst, worst is gonna happen, these 150 trees are gonna evaporate. Uh, money that we do have, we have a little bit of money in this account, 57,000, I propose we could use half of that to get this project going. Usually with grants, they require you to have some skin in the game, so we could put some money into this and get some of this going. Uh, this, this proposal I put forward in front of you, it reminds me, or I took it from my experience back in the old Alec days, American Legislative Exchange Council. What would happen is Alec would come together, they would study an issue and then they would develop a model statute or a model ordinance or a model something and then those who believed in that philosophy, free market, uh, um, conservative values would go back to their community, back to their legislatures and try to implement those, those policies. And that's what I've tried to propose here is, we can start this, we can launch this with a combination of a little bit of money, some volunteer work, a public engagement, I'm sure that we'd hear more, we've only heard positive feedback from the public, but we would hear more once people can gather more readily than they have been under this pandemic. So my concern is if we don't move, if we don't act, uh, maybe this is a bit of a stretch, but we're gonna have a dam that's gonna break. Because someone, instead of addressing the issue and meeting the public need, is just gonna study it and ponder it and file lawsuits that are off-base and this to me is a real positive thing for this community. We've done a lot of good things in terms of cleaning up the balance sheet, dressing fire, we've, you know, here we are with this ISO increased rating. Police force, it's well-respected, but from a recreation standpoint, we're still sorely lacking and this could be a major step forward. So I, I just put this forward so you would hopefully back some kind of action here soon to launch this and it, it has to be phased, it has to be developed and changed, but let's act, let's do something positive for this community at this place now, or at the next meeting.
Now, you gave us a resolution, a draft resolution, would, would it be, would you wanna see that on a future agenda, I assume, correct?
No, I'd wanna have people, I'd wanna have each of the members comment to me, that was more of an attempt to say, look, this is a realistic thing, we can, I could've put it into a memo form, but no one's gonna read a memo, probably, but if they-
If you sent it, I'd read it.
Well, thank you Chuck, I appreciate it.
I do.
I, I tried to just show, we can, we can get this going, we can get it going now and if we don't act, I don't know, what happens with those 150 trees? Um, what happens, we saw what happened when someone didn't cash a check back in 2016, that check was now, no longer valid when that business went belly up. So one of the issues that government has, um, I forget who developed this, but it's his fifth law, which is government tends to do nothing. And that's the path of least resistance and then bad things happen, or good things don't happen that should happen. So, uh, let's take advantage of this 150 tree, we call it a donation, but really Laura, it's not just a charitable donation, they had to do this to get site plan approval for their new construction, so this is something they have to do. Let's take advantage of it, let's do it now while it's still a, a prime issue with that company.
So, correct, well, that's why they can't renig on it, it was part of our tree ordinance.
So for the site plan approval, they, they were required to replace approximately 100 trees that they were removing on site and that they couldn't accommodate on the site today. So, but then in addition to those 100 trees, they voluntarily offered another 50. So that's, that's a bit outside.
So the 50 is potentially at risk if they renig on their word, but remember, we allowed that project to go forward without some of the early formalities to accommodate their timing. So there, it's a quid pro quo, we, we've done a good job for them and, uh, to have a foreign company say we're gonna renig because of COVID or whatever, uh, we don't wanna accept that answer, but.
Right. Jack, you had mentioned 57,000, is that the, are you referring to the tree fund?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not the sidewalk fund.
Sidewalk.
Sidewalk fund, yes, sorry.
That's a different story, that's a different pot.
Oh, you're talk, so you're talking about the money that we set aside to match for the-
It's in lieu of sidewalk money.
Sidewalks, yeah.
For, for the, uh, for the sidewalk gap project?
Yes, well, no, but it's company, where the money came from is companies, instead of putting a sidewalk to nowhere or doing something stupid, they put money essentially into this fund, paid it to us.
Yeah, okay.
And then we can use it, like you said, for the gaps, which has been our first priority.
All right, well, we're talking about the same thing, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, and there is a sidewalk gap here, so the first thing that occurred to me is use 5,000 or whatever it is to, to make that crossing feasible. But I think if there's, there's really no prospect that we're gonna have this gap thing done this year, we're not, so use some more of it for sidewalk, a, AKA pathway here.
You mean displace it and, I mean, change our priority, the priority was North Territorial before, for the gap.
I'm saying-
Expecting that from the county, which isn't going to happen.
Right.
Now.
Still a good idea, but it's not gonna happen this year. So use some of this, I'm not proposing right now to use all of it, but use some of it. So I guess I would like to come back in two weeks with a resolution that's, that's not as specific as what I drafted, but broader that approves of the concept of moving forward with this, accepting the tree donation or whatever you wanna call it and then some flexibility to use some of our funds to make that crossing and do something with regard to, um, getting this launched. I think we can get volunteers to come out and do a lot of the initial work on removing the, um, the, the, the plant material that we don't want there, so we can-
It's gonna be, have to be hardy volunteers to do that with no help.
Well, you see what the Friends of the Rouge does, they have people go into the Rouge River, you know this well, I'm sure Chuck, they clear out old automobiles and other, uh, material that's in the river that accumulates every year and they do that, I think we can do this in this community, I'm sure we'd have a groundswell of support for it.
So the hard work is done, you got a drawing, okay, that, you got a drawing so you can use, uh, the part, you can use the drawing as a guide. Like Kurt said, it is a little backwards, you can plant the trees, but again, I don't support planting trees before October 1st. Their survivability goes way down when you plant them in July and August. And we have a very bad record right here, we planted some very beautiful trees that have been poorly maintained by the township, girdled by the tree, weed whipping people. We just, and we have a great rain garden, it was put in less than a year ago, it's already in a state of disrepair.
Yeah.
So we don't, we're not good at taking care of some of these assets.
So what you do, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, is you go to one of these nurseries and you tag the trees that you want, you essentially buy those trees, or Wabasto buys those trees for planting in September, October, whenever, but you do this now, you don't tell them, yeah, thanks for the 150 trees, uh, we'll call you up in 2021 and now we'll talk about what we're gonna do. Now is the time to start this and I think it'd be a great positive thing for this community.
Yeah, I support starting it, but I don't wanna formalize it in a resolution quite as aggressive as this.
Yeah, I-
We've got, like I said, the drawing is a great tool and, but we have to do some homework, well, you've already done the homework on where to place trees and if you do it right, you place the trees such that you could, if you're, you can put the sidewalk in or walkway in later if you had to.
It's not the optimum scenario, but it would, it would be, it's better than nothing if, I'd, I'd hate to turn or turn down all this free trees.
Well-
Heck, I, go ahead, sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
No.
Well, I was just, I was just gonna comment on this project, I wish that I shared your enthusiasm for it, but I don't. Here's my, here's my problem, I spent a lot of time over the last couple of months while everybody was quarantined, I spent a lot of time walking up and down here. I have a regular jogging path that I go down here and I go up through McClumpa Park and back down. And it keeps striking me, everything you talk about, walking paths, jogging paths, benches, we already have all that. 400 steps away at the park. Um, and my experience has been as you're walking down this sidewalk and you go through the park, it's in a need of a lot of repair. That wooden fence that's there is old and rotted and has to be replaced and it looks awful. There's scrub along the sidewalk, Gary, as you mentioned, every single time at this point in the year, even though it's Wayne County's fault, it's scrub that's been growing forever and it grows out and it impedes, we keep talking about we need walkable and bikeable, it impedes the sidewalk, it impedes the bike path and it's just because no one has ever maintained that scrub or those trees. You get into the park, we've got a wonderful walking path that goes all the way around, it's in need of repair. Um, we've got trails that were started in the back for walking that were never completed, that would be a great asset. The area around the pond is a mess. I, I am all for all the things we talk about, improving our recreation and all of these things, but to me, everything this would offer, we already have 400 steps away in the park, I would take the money and I would improve the current assets that we have and we're already struggling to maintain those. If we add more assets and do this, we're gonna struggle to maintain these or, they're gonna become in a state of disarray. My recommendation would be take the money and improve what we already have and leave this for another opportunity. My thoughts.
So slow it down?
No, I'd say do nothing.
Well, do nothing for now, but
I, I just don't see, I just-
Over the next 10 years or something.
I don't see the benefit of putting a park 400 steps from a park, I just don't see it.
Well, I respect your opinion a lot on many things Mark, but on this one, we're 180 degrees, uh, opposite. I walk that park myself, around and around and then counterclockwise. Uh, there's not a lot of variation. As far as its condition, um, it's much better than it was in 2016 when I was walking it. Sure, there could be some improvements made, but what this would do is connect this piece of property to everybody who's further west. They could access it by walking to it or biking to it. And I think the same thing could've been said with regard to, um, what we're proposing at Johnson Creek, that development there, they're gonna have a walking path, well, why? Why should they be required to have a walking path as part of that development? They could just get in their car and drive to Township Park. Well, that's an amenity, that's an increased, enhanced part of this community, just as this is.
I also have the developer paying for that. Right, so that's a little different, a developer's paying for Johnson Creek's walkway.
Yeah.
We're talking here, we're paying.
No, here we're talking about a developer donating 80 trees at least to this property. And looking for grants, that's really the funding source, I'm not proposing to use $100,000 of general fund money to do this park, just the opposite. So, I don't know that anybody's catalogued the needs at Township Park, um, that'd be a good thing to do, how much does that require to be repaired? But I just-
At Township Park, it's day-to-day maintenance activity that goes up, that needs to go on.
I think-
That takes labor.
I think, well, a lot of what you've heard today is this could be passive in terms of maintenance, with some creative use of meadows and grasses and so forth, so. I appreciate your point of view, but I, am I gonna have to keep driving by this property for 10 and 20 more years, assuming I'm still kicking and see-
Not 20, but-
See that it's still-
A little while longer.
Unusable, it's still got invasive species, it's, it's still not, uh, something that meets what this community said in that recreation survey it wants, more amenities?
Although bike paths or walkways was the number one. Connectivity and, and pathways, right?
I'm for, I'm for getting rid of the invasive species, I think this, this whole area, and not only here, but all the way down to the entrance of the park needs a complete overhaul. Um, because it's impeding walkers and it's impeding bikers today, I think it just, and, and I've walked at this trail a number of times with neighbors and they said, boy, this is really looking dumpy. I, I think we, we just, we just have to fix that up, I'm just for, if we have money, invest in fixing what we have before we start investing in new things that we're gonna have to continue to maintain.
Okay, why don't we, uh, anybody else on the board have any comments?
Well, we didn't say anything about Powell Road access to the golf course, that's kind of related to this.
Well, it's related, but it's not part of the plan, just scroll down Bob.
It borders it, right?
Yeah. You know, Powell Road is still a county road, it's a dirt road, obviously, um, we have, um, can you scroll down just a little bit Bob?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was driving, I forgot.
Uh, I'm sorry, just the map, just, we wanna see Powell Road there, the entrance.
You wanna see Powell, oh.
Powell, yep, stop. So, um, it's like still a county road, it's the only access to the golf course. I will just tell you that if I could, if I had a magic wand, I would like to see a proper, safe, direct driveway right off of Ann Arbor Trail, right into the golf course parking lot, I know that existed at one point, I don't know, all, we've heard many, I've heard many different stories as to why it was terminated. But I think a, that would be the logical, safe, reasonable way to get in there and, and I know there's hazards, I know that there's some line of sight issues but there's just as many problems and hazards on Powell Road trying to get on the Beck, uh, I mean, it's crazy and so unless you want, unless we're gonna spend a bazillion dollars and put a traffic light there, which would be really silly, um, I think the safest route right now would be to put a direct route right off of Ann Arbor Trail, right to the golf course, cause Powell and-
Because Powell and Beck is not gonna get any less busy.
It'll get worse.
It's gonna get worse in the years ahead with all of the development in Canton. That is the number one route for people in Canton to get on M14. We're gonna have more housing in that area. So I agree. I mean, I think we need to look at that whole exit entrance into the golf course. But I don't see that as part of this park concept. Even if Powell Road were to be abandoned, we'd, we'd just have a dirt path, I guess, that we would have to deal with. Road. So what's the course of action? Would we like to take this up again in the, at a future meeting? Our next meeting is June 23rd, which is two weeks from now. And then we are going to, we are not going to have a study session in early July, so then our next meeting would be July 14th.
Would that include a public discussion on this then?
Um, I am hoping that we will have a normal public meeting in general after June 30th.
I think it's important to hear, like Jack and Mark's sides from everybody.
Yeah.
I still hear people that put, we wanna put houses in there, so.
Well, you know, we, we looked at that up. I, I had that property appraised and we would have made about $800,000 off of that site, so.
Yeah, I know.
Driving range.
I've heard driving range, dog parks, swimming pools. We had, what, the golf? Art museum, history, historical building, so. What I would like to propose is that I draft something that perhaps could meet with this board's support as a draft to be discussed at the next meeting. Again, not to be necessarily acted on, but to have further discussion about how this might go forward.
So in the meantime, if we have other locations for the trees, who has the ball? At least we can go forward in planting those this fall if we don't go forward here. Like the various other parks, the Township Park, who's got the ball to get those trees in hand and then coordinate the planting?
That's the combination of myself, Laura, Sarah Weisell, and Eric Anderson at the park.
Didn't Robasto say they were willing to pay to have them put in too?
Yeah.
So this is an important piece. They're willing to pay.
That's why somebody's gotta have the ball. I know we have a committee, but, so, because October 1st will come here real quick. And doing it right will improve the longevity or survivability of those trees. Just throwing them in the ground.
Right.
Like was, tomorrow I'm going to go replant the white oak that's in the rain garden that is literally the roots and everything are out of the ground. So those are the, that's the kind of thing we don't want to happen again.
Okay. So we're going to close the discussion for tonight. We're not voting on anything, so we will, we'll terminate the discussion on item seven. Okay? Very good. Then we're gonna move on to item F, supervisor and trustee comments. As I said earlier, we will be meeting again on June 23rd. In, more than likely in this same kind of format because the governor has not amended or rescinded the executive order relating to the Open Meetings Act until June 30th. So we'll be doing the Public Safety Millage Renewal ballot language that night. We have some appointments and reappointments. We may have a presentation by the chairwoman of the Historic District Commission. And then Mr. Vorba will have an update for us on the election and the challenges that are being faced in the clerk's office, which have never been faced before by, by any other clerks in Michigan, not just unique.
You're talking about this, where people are getting the request for absentee ballot.
The absentee ballot requests, the amount of work underway now in the clerk's office, the, the constantly changing dynamics of, of, of the, the political side of things, the regulatory side. It's, it's constantly changing. Yeah, I'll bring in and I'll pass over to the clerk a mailing I got at my house for someone who lived at my house a decade ago. July 14th, I'd like to do the annual economic development update. Gary Heitman and Laura Haw, if you guys are available for that. That would be great. Gary? Yep, okay. We have a brownfield plan that has been tentatively approved by the Brownfield Authority. This is for the old courthouse grill site and the proposed apartment building that's supposed to go in there. They're coming to this board on July 14th. They still have a few things to work out with the township engineer. But we're gonna, they're gonna get their day in court. They're gonna come and they're gonna make their presentation. And we're gonna see where. They would like Brownfield financing to the tune of about $1.2 million.
Oh, they want it to pay for the demolition?
They've removed the demolition actually from the, from their list. This really goes to other, mostly structures the, the dropping of caissons into the.
Foundation development.
Yeah, for the building itself. So the caissons is the major cost. But they've also added some other things on there that we don't believe are necessary under the Brownfield Act that would be considered essential or critical as brownfield infrastructure. That they may be asking for a little bit too much. So we're trying to get that number down. We think the number is about 640,000, which is about half. So we, we have a long way to go and we'll see what, we'll see what they're willing to.
What date is that meeting?
That would be July 14th. That's a regular.
I'd like that done as soon as possible, so yeah, that's.
It's a regular meeting.
So they'll come to this board on July 14th or the Brownfield?
No, they'll come to this board.
When are they going to the Brownfield?
They went last night and they were tentatively approved.
Okay.
So they were approved tentatively with various restrictions. Again, our next meeting here will be under this kind of remote, semi-remote format. And then hopefully after June 30th, we will more than likely continue to be in this room in this two-tiered format, but hopefully we'll be able to have more people in the room.
But that'll be flexible depending on if things change, correct?
It's certainly. I mean, if, if rules are amended or rescinded or modified, they happen, they, they happen anytime. It can, there can be a press conference tomorrow where the rules are gonna change again, so. We, we would like to be able to return to some semblance of normalcy here. But we're, we're trying to provide television, internet, phone, TV, in person, you know, for people to come to the meetings. Because not everybody in Plymouth Township has access to the internet either. And believe it or not, we have a lot of people, mostly senior citizens, who do not have internet access and they've, they've chosen that. And so we have to make sure that we have as many different forms of media out there as possible.
They have telephone though, right?
They have telephone, so that hopefully they can call here unless they're on a rotary phone or something where they're really, then they'd be really out of luck. But most people have at least a, a digital phone that they can work with. Or they can come to the meeting. Okay, that's really all I had. I, I could pontificate on current events all night, but I'd rather go home. So Jerry?
Just briefly, a little bit of update. We'll discuss a lot of issues next week for election stuff. But I just wanted to say if people are getting applications from any situation that, for a person that does not live at their house, get those to me, but I need to know that you write on it if you're gonna drop it off, so you do not live here, you know, these people do not live here. And then I can at least flag them in the system so that they can't vote in some other way or someone else used them in some other way. So please get them to me and just let me know that they don't live there. Write that on the, on the form or on the envelope. I've had some people just drop the whole envelope off to me. Some people tear them up and drop them in my box in pieces because they're angry, but, and then I don't know what to do with them other than, than just hang on to it, but.
Is that happening because that person is still registered at that address?
Yeah, there's a number of reasons why. You could have someone that, let's say you just lived in your house only five years, but someone lived in it five years before and that person was in the military. Well, they maintain that as their registered address if they're overseas or somewhere. So it could be a military person. That never changes until they go someplace else, get out of the military or register someplace else. So it could be a legitimate reason. And then again, it could be they went to a state and they didn't get over to the Secretary of State or, or whatever.
Jerry, you're not saying that somebody was in the military, lived in my house five years ago. They moved away. How can they still use that as their base?
It's the, it's the rule.
The rule. How can you communicate with them?
It's the rule.
I know, but how could, what if I just throw away their mail?
It doesn't matter because they use the system, they use the governmental system, the Unicava system, to where they, they ask for a ballot sent to their location or by email. But their, their address there is still their record registration place.
Only the government would do something like that.
Thank you very much.
I got, I got an application at my house for one of the residents who lived in my house 16 years ago.
Yeah. And so this is a problem that we'll talk about in general.
Right.
Where there really needs to be a cleanup of the process. There needs to be, and, and I'm just amazed.
We've been told the cleanup has been going on for a decade, the QVF file. The risk in the primary is low. In the presidential primary, it's high. In the primary here in Plymouth, you'll be able to weed it out, but people will be able to vote multiple times in the presidential primary if you live in Maryland and have, you're voting there and you have an absentee ballot here in Plymouth Township. You could do it.
Yeah, you would be against the law, but you could do it.
Well, it's a felony.
Yeah, it's a felony, yeah. So, but.
Only if you're caught.
Yeah, only if you're caught.
Yeah, only if you're caught.
Yeah. But, but at any, any rate, so, so let me know that. And, and this just goes to that there needs to be a better, and I'm amazed that, you know, I can order something from somewhere else in the world and it gets to me in a couple of days. That we don't have a system, not necessarily a national system, but a system where all of the states can get into where someone could find out that they, there, there's someone else that's registered. I mean, we have people registered in our system that are the same person that got married and they're registered twice. I mean, how does that happen, you know? And so.
My, my daughter lives in New York. She could vote in New York and vote, and vote at my house right now and she would never get caught.
Yeah, no one would know. That's my point.
And I could, and I could collude, I'm not going to, folks, but I mean, I could collude with her. I could, you know, have her sign everything and she could mail it back and all of that and I'd get a, I'd get a free vote. But, you know.
I've heard from two staffing companies this week that they are very, very busy working with city and township clerks to clean up these types of things. I've sent a couple of them over Jerry's way to say, you know, if we get this bad, you know, don't try to do it yourself.
Well, I understand a lawsuit was filed today.
Yes, it was.
But against the Secretary of State and 16
Counties.
County clerks, basically just alleging that their, their, their voting records are a mess and have not been updated. And I'm, I'm just as baffled as you are, Chuck, because I know for years, this goes back to when Candace Miller was Secretary of State and Terry Land, they were constantly updating and telling clerks to update their, their QVF files.
But, but you can't just delete people, you know? You have to have some empirical data, a registration card from someplace else or, or from the state saying, "Okay, this person's dead" or "This person has actually registered somewhere else." It takes sometimes a couple of cycles. But I'm just amazed that, that in today's technology, that we don't have a system that all 50 states could talk to each other and figure out that this same person with this date of birth, with this social security number or driver's license, you know, is the same person. And I'm just amazed by it.
I think that's the difficulty, right? Because the social security number's not part of the record.
No, but what I'm saying is whatever the system you're doing, there's, I, I mean, I, I mean, the IRS.
With all the technology you're saying you're missing, that it's not happening. Can you imagine what's going on in the state of Washington with Bragg's that they've been doing mail-in voting for years?
There still has to be a unique key. And unless you're gonna use a social security number, you don't, there's no way you could ever fix that, you know, the database.
We're using names, the last name.
Well, I mean, you could put enough, you could, you could, you could have a logarithm where you had enough key elements like date of birth, name, you know, you could, you could flag something, at least alert me that potentially that person in Florida is the same person here. And then we could talk to each other and find out, yes, they are, no, they're not. But at, at any rate, so we've received about 1,500 of these state-issued applications. We're still processing them and we're, some of them are very easy, some are very difficult. And we just mailed out, you know, 6,000 of our own that have hit this week, this weekend or this week. And so we're gonna be very busy.
You have the ballots already?
Part, yes, they're coming.
Oh, they're not here yet?
What?
The ballots.
The ballots are not here, but 6,000 of our own applications for our, our permanent.
So these are on top of the ones, so the people are gonna get multiples now?
No, no, they're not supposed to. The state, the state only sent out allegedly, only sent out allegedly, to people who were not on my permanent list.
Oh.
So there's 23,000 voters and we have 6,000, so they sent out 17,000 allegedly or more because they have all these extra people, you know, who knows?
And they complied with the Headley Amendment, right? They, they gave us funds to help with this additional work.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What is, give us the direction. What is the best, most efficient way for you to receive the application? U.S. mail? What is the easiest for your workload?
The easiest for my workload is for me to either get it in the mail or have it dropped off here in one of the boxes because the scan.
Hard copy then.
Hard copy. Because the scanned, the scan, what people are emailing me to, to me, you can't necessarily scan the barcode on there. That's the easy, because I take that, I scan it, the, the information pops up. If I, if I don't have that, then I've gotta manually type in the person's name and bring it up, so. Speed is, is important. So anyway, at any rate, if you get something that doesn't, if you think doesn't belong there, mark it up as this person does not belong here. Get it to me and I can at least flag them in the system. So we're gonna be very busy. Allegedly, the ballots are on their way. Maybe we'll get them, you know, Friday or Monday. And then that whole process of marrying the applications and the ballots to people and mailing them out in a couple of weeks.
So when do you expect the absentees to start?
A couple of weeks. We wanna build a mass mailing for cheap mail, so a couple of weeks.
So before the end of June?
Would like to, yes. I don't have the ballots yet, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
All set? Gary?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. Bob, Jack, Chuck?
Nothing.
No? Mark?
All good.
Okay. Uh, anybody in the public? You all set?
Oh, I got one. Are, are we gonna, if these things continue with the, where we have to have these kinds of meetings, you don't want to adopt Zoom call-in and video?
Chuck, we have had this discussion every other Tuesday.
So why don't we do it?
It's because, no, because not everyone has access to that. It doesn't always.
Then they use a phone for the Zoom.
It didn't work for us tonight. They went, they weren't down for a few minutes, so no, I mean, we're.
The part that I'm hung, like, this is a serious question. I don't understand. I participated in Zoom meetings where you only call in, but some people are on video. Why can't we do it like that?
We're.
You do both. I do it once a week at my Kiwanis Club. Some people are.
Well, and, and it, we also, we also, unlike the Kiwanis Club or the, or the, you know, Wayne County Republicans or Rotary, we, we have, we have statutory responsibilities here too. We, we have responsibilities for due process, First Amendment, equal protection that does, is not satisfied by Zoom. I think this was very poorly, I'm not, I'm not mad at you, Chuck.
No, I don't understand why it's not.
I'm frustrated because this was not thought out by the governor's office and by her army of lawyers and the Attorney General, and they screwed this up. And what, and what they don't, what they made it, what they made it very convenient for local governments to meet in, in private and, and do all of this stuff on Zoom where there are many people in their communities who don't have the internet access that's necessary. They don't have the technological expertise. They don't have the wherewithal to, to, to go online and, and log into these systems. And it's, it's not fair. It's just not fair. And so, you know, we, we tried to play ball for a while and it, it's, it's not fair to the citizens. We have constitutional responsibilities. And what we're trying to do is balance that as much as possible with the, the, the rules that have been imposed upon us. And, and, and even this, even the, the governor's executive orders on the Open Meetings Act are still optional. They are not mandatory. But a lot of communities, I think, are taking advantage of it so that they don't have to have the public at their meetings. They love at, doing Zoom meetings because they can sit at home and they can talk amongst themselves and they don't have to worry about somebody showing up at their. themselves, and they don't have to worry about somebody showing up at their meeting and raising hell, okay? I'm not, we're not afraid of that, unless it's you, Callahan, then we're going to get you. Okay? So anyway, that's my speech. We're, we're doing the best we can, while hopefully we'll just have one more meeting.
I'm just having a really hard time explaining it to people that beat me up all the time.
Well, you'd have them, have them call me. I, I know, I see the same things on social media, and I think we've addressed it pretty effectively. Okay, anybody on the phone, really? Okay, Melissa is on her computer. You're on the air. Okay, so we have Melissa on a computer, and we're gonna, we're gonna let you speak now, okay?
Thank you so much. I've been waiting for two and a half hours to really be able to talk and contact you guys. Basically, I've lived in Plymouth Township for two years, and I have to say that when I looked at both the attendance night and the various township cases, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
No.
Yes.
Basically, by looking online, I was really disappointed that there hasn't been really any announcements of any critical public protests locally, statewide, nationally, and internationally regarding the legacy of racism and the need of racial justice. As social studies and testimonials emerge, appear that racism is pervasive in every aspect of our lives and in every community across America, including mine. I just heartened that I couldn't find any information on any diversity, inclusion, or anti-racism work that is done by either Plymouth Township or Plymouth Township Department, but I couldn't find information on Halloween safety, 27 results, I couldn't find any other results on these important issues. So my question for you all today is what specific measures are you taking to integrate anti-racism work into Plymouth Township policies, both through its police department and through its various agencies? Do you think it's enough and why?
Okay.
Will you repeat the question?
No, I, I heard the question. Chief, I, it's basically, what are we doing to combat racism and, and the police, and police policies and procedures? And I know one thing, yeah, and I know one thing that we're going to be doing, I believe the, I think the Conference of Western Wayne, which is a, a regional body that we belong to, is going to be doing some seminars and listening sessions with various members of the community in the next, in the weeks ahead. And we do have Chief Tidrington here with us, and Chief, if you could just come forward here so we can get you on TV as well, just if you want to make any other comments at this point.
We're doing a number of things. We've done a lot in past years, but I realize we need to do more, and we've got a number of programs in place to essentially audit the activities of our officers. We actually call people that have been arrested, we call people that have been given tickets, and we ask them if, how they were treated, if they felt they were treated with respect. We also diligently and comprehensively follow up on every citizen complaint that's made to our department. If we're wrong, we tell the people, the citizen, that, that we were wrong, and we correct the, the behavior of the officer. I think it's indicative of the very few complaints that we get, the professionalism of our police officers. But we also understand we need to do more, and we're, we're trying to do that.
Okay. So Melissa, if you have any other questions for the chief, if you could go onto our website, you can either email him or you can call him directly, and we'd be happy to talk to you about that in more detail.
And what about the township agencies?
Township agencies?
Yeah, like how are you in the township office integrating anti-racism work into your work?
You know, we're always striving for continuous improvement in all of our operations, and, and this is certainly something that we can take a look at in the future.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, if you have any forward suggestions, I'd love to hear them.
Okay, thank you.
Come to a meeting.
All right, so Bob, we have anybody else? Okay, very good. Need a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Heitman.
I move adjourned at 9:35.
Motion's made by trustee Heitman.